Have the rest of the council feel about setting up committee?
I move to set up a committee to research yellow trash bags.
Okay, there's a motion to set up committee to research yellow trash bags. I have a second.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I'd like some, I'd like some direction on how we go about setting up committee.
Well, let's wait until we see if it passes first.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second.
Well, in discussing it, surely we could discuss the procedure of how this would be set up.
Well, once we get it approved, then we just set up and we take volunteers from setting up the committee and any citizens that want to participate, if willing to participate. And you can set up your meetings however you want to set them up, and whenever you want to set them up, and bring back your results to the council.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way that we've done any of the other committees before. Mr. Pennell?
Well, just for, just for a point of clarification, along with what Ms. Balance said, it's like the workshop for the, excuse me, dog ordinance. I think there's some, I don't want to say concern, but, but normally whenever a, at least at the commission level, because I have not had the experience other than the ones that I've sat in on in the last few years, whenever I was tapped by the mayor to sit on a particular committee, it ended up being a, an assumption that every one of the council members had to be there, concerned citizens, and it was basically chaired by the mayor. And I think that, let me see if I can say this the right way. I, I think that if we, if we do that in setting up a committee, I think it needs to be those that are willing to put the time into it, instead of feeling like, well, I'm on the council, I've got to go to the yellow bag committee meeting today. And I think that the committee or workshop group that is formed ought to be able to work independently of feeling like the whole council is, is sitting there dictating what's going to be discussed and not discussed. I'd like to be able to see it with a couple of council members and the concerned citizens, pro or con, sitting at the table, not having to feel like they have to sit around the edge of the room while the discussions are going on. I think, and I don't want to make an assumption that that's part of Ms. Balance's concern, but I know it would be mine that if that's the case, then it might as well be something that's sit here and discussed at the table every two weeks, because that's where we're at with the dog workshop. It just needs to be people that, that are, that have an interest in it and then present something back to this table. I mean, even if, even if there's only one council person and six concerned citizens, I don't think we ought to feel like that it's something that each and every member of the governing body has to sit and attend.
Any other comments? From my experience, and James can correct me with his experience too, the committees that I have sat on, the council is always, you might say, ad hoc members. They're always willing and welcome to be at any committee meetings that's available, not necessarily required. It's like you said, sometimes it's whoever volunteers and wants to be on it. Obviously, Ms. Balance is, this is one of her pet projects, and so she would be, you know, one of the people on there. Any of the other council members that feel willing and interested in this can be member, named as a member of the committee. We can find people from the citizens, any citizens out there that are interested in being on the yellow bag committee can contact the mayor's office, and we can set up names and, and then we can set up meeting times that's convenient for everybody. The mayor, being as mayor, is always, you know, another ad hoc committee person, and I'm not sure if he's a formal head or not. I guess I'm just not aware that it's one of his projects that he wants to be involved in, being the, the chair of the city. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not. It doesn't have to be strictly the council members. And, you know, obviously, some of the members aren't interested in the dog ordinance, as some of us are, as witnessed by who shows up. So, you know, there's no requirements for council members to show up. Again, I'm not sure that answers your question.
Well, I just, I just want to clarify that, you know, if, if there are people, if we're going to take on a task, then it needs to be clarified, because, for example, if I don't feel that there's a need to even address it, I don't, I don't want to be looked at as a council member, and I'm not saying I don't, I don't want to be looked at as that I'm not doing my job for the citizenry because I'm spending my time on something else. Do we have a motion, or we're in discussion?
We actually have a motion to set up the committee in a second. I believe that was the motion, wasn't it? So, and, and the question was, how do we set it up? And I said, wait until we see if it passes. If it doesn't pass, and we're on it, we know. It's a good question. Yes, ma'am.
When committees, when committees are set up, is it their privilege to elect the chairman if there is a chairman? Or are we automatically stuck with the mayor?
If the mayor, I, I guess it's kind of a legal question. I'm not sure how that works.
I don't think there is a requirement that the mayor serve as a chairman, but if the mayor certainly proposes a committee, he or she normally does chair that committee, unless they defer it to someone else. But if council is the one calling for the committee, I think that the committee can be chaired by someone other than the mayor.
Thank you.
You know, and again, you know, we would ask for volunteers from the city, the community. I mean, it's what started the dog ordinance, the dog review was concerned citizens, and those same concerned citizens have been showing up, and so you might say they're part of the committee in a sense, even though they're not formal on here, but they certainly, we've been listening to their input on there. So, any other questions, comments, discussion on this motion? Motion to form a yellow bag committee, and I guess basically what this committee is to being established for is to determine whether or not we should continue with requiring the purchases and selling of the yellow bags, and doing away with the yellow bags.
Yellow bag research committee, if you will.
All right. All right, all those in favor of establishing a yellow bag research committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Is your vote changed?
Fine. You'd have heard it if I said no.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that Ms. Balance be the chair and be able to be the focal point for volunteers, letting her know who is interested in being on that committee.
I'll second that.
All right, well, we got a motion to, to make Ms. Balance the chair of the yellow bag research committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved.
Oh, boy.
I would ask that if you please keep everybody notified of when the meetings are at the council members, in case we can, are interested in attending.
Certainly, thank you.
Yeah. All right, next up is our item 11, award map adjustments. Madam Clerk?
I did obtain the names and addresses of voters in various wards, and was able to review the census map a little more carefully and identify with Mr. Berry's help places where the census map does not match the ward maps. So at this point, what I'd like to do is ask for help going over the addresses, seeing if there are any other areas that weren't identified in the last workshop. So I'm asking for help from council to review the addresses and make corrections, and then set about adjusting the numbers.
I'll help you.
Yes, sir.
Are our wards set up so, in such a disarray? Our, our good neighbors to the east across the river have already written and passed ordinances realigning their, their wards within less than 30 days after the legislature passed the, or, right, excuse me, the census information and the recommendations from the municipal league and looking at our, our districts, the wards, the way they are set up, are we, are we making a, I don't want to say a mountain out of a molehill, but it sure seems like that, you know, are, are theirs so squared and?
Thank you, Bud.
I was going to say, they're pretty squared, cut and squared, same thing with most cities.
Yeah, they're set out in a grid, as ours are set out in a serpentine pattern.
So what did you see?
Yeah, our wards have always been kind of messed up, and we, we got to looking at this, and there's still some, even according to this map, we've found some discrepancies. So, we're going to literally have to find out who lives, have you gotten that information yet from the voters, voter registration?
From the county?
Yeah. So, you know, hopefully we can get this squared away pretty quick.
Will you help?
I'll help, yeah. As I can, you bet. All right, any other thing, items, questions, comments, discussion? All right, new business, discussion place in Basin Park project on the ballot for the next general election.
Move to discuss.
Second.
All right, move and discussed. Mr. City Attorney, do you have a thoughts on this?
Well, I would caution the city council, if they so desire to do this, that parks is independent of control directly from this table. And I think you may be overstepping your bounds if you are trying to dictate what they do within the park. You are, by state law, charged with dealing with city funds and city property, but as I understand, they're not trying to sell any city property, they're not trying to obtain any more property for the city, they're not talking of expending city funding. If they're not, you may be overstepping your bounds to try to propose something to the voters, which you're not clarifying how you have control over. They're dictated by state law with certain guidelines to maintain and administer by virtue of the enabling legislation that's been passed to create them. And you're, you're looking at trying to potentially put your stamp of approval, or the voter's stamp of approval, one, above what they've already been dictated to control. And if you overstep that bounds, or if you try to refer something to the people that you don't have the authority to do, you're overstepping into theirs and potentially could bring down, God forbid, another lawsuit on the city.
Mr. Pennell?
Well, I have a question for Mr. Levine at this point in time, or whomever wants to jump right in there and answer. It's my understanding, and the first thing I'd like to clarify, and my telephone just rings all the time anymore, I even didn't realize, because it wasn't on the agenda, I had to go back to the minutes to see who even put this, requested this be put on the agenda. And unless I'm mistaken, and I'd like, actually, I would, you know, like to show my ignorance and say, does necessarily seconding to have something put on the agenda does not indicate pro or con?
No.
Against it?
Okay.
Because I've gotten some very adamant telephone calls, because I was the one that seconded to put this on the agenda for discussion, that, you know, why, why are you causing so much trouble keeping the Parks Department from building their, their project? But my question, direct question to Mr. Levine would be this, it's my understanding that this total project is being done with private donated funds, correct?
That's correct.
So, at some point in time during the process of this project, you're going to stand there and, and look me in the eye and say, we will not be coming to council for any money?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Balance?
Will there be a special fund set up for the maintenance of this structure, or will that at some point fall to public works, which is public?
Who's going to maintain the Basin Park?
Parks maintains.
No, who's going to maintain the hole in Basin Park?
Who maintains the hole right now?
If it's just a hole, it won't need any maintenance.
Who maintains it now?
We do.
There is a, there is a hole in Basin Park right now.
Correct. And Parks maintains all holes in Basin Park at the present time.
So that is, so that is actually public expenditure. So at some point, even if private funds pay for the whole deal, at some point, the Parks Department is going to maintain it, which is expenditure of public funds. So it's not true that this will never cost the people anything, because if the people, if the people's funds are going to maintain it, then indeed it does cost the people something.
The question, I believe, was, will this cost, the construction cost anybody anything?
That wasn't my question.
That was Mr. Pennell's question, I believe.
Well, I'm not looking at Mr. Pennell.
My question was ask and answer, hers was totally different.
That's what I thought, okay. Mr. DeVito?
Well, the way the cistern is set up right now, it's probably cost prohibitive in comparison to, you know, the intended project. The project's going to be built out of limestone, so, you know, maybe 100 years from now, there may need to be some maintenance done on the project, but right now, maintaining the cistern there is probably more difficult than an open space where the Parks people will be able to walk down the stairs and clean out the basin. So, you know, it, it could go either way as far as funds, and, and we're talking about, at the most, hardly negligible expenditures, because the Parks is already maintaining it, they do routine maintenance on the cistern, and I understand that the cistern is in such bad condition right now that there's some fear of going down in there, so, you know, addressing crumbling infrastructure is also part of the project too. So, you know, in the long run, it, it may actually turn out to be cheaper for the city opening it up like that.
Anyone else?
I just wonder what the general public thinks of this. Sounds really like the Parks had their mind made up, I'm going to go for it, no matter what the general public says. I've only talked to one person who thought this was a good idea. I get a lot of phone calls too, a lot of traffic through my office.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, this has gone through the HDC, this has gone through planning, this had a public hearing at, at the Parks meeting. I would say the people that attended the meeting, there was more support for it than there was against it. June Westfall, the city's historian, was excited about the project. It's been shown before Rotary, it was widely accepted. Granted, there's a handful of people, but I've seen that handful of people, and, and they tend to resist any change in the community whatsoever. I have not had one single phone call, not one single email by anybody in the community against this project. I think as it has been shown to the community, it has been well received and embraced by the community. I think, you know, speaking from a historical perspective, I'll defer to the town's historian, who's quite excited and, and was, and her words were that she hopes that she'll live to, to see the basin exposed, because that's, you know, the touchstone upon which the city is built around. It's basically incorporating a perspective like Sweet Springs, opening up the spring that way. I could make the statement that 100 years ago, that a mistake was made, and that 100 years later, a group of dedicated citizens are trying to rectify the mistake that was made over 100 years ago by relegating a sacred spot to the Indians, to the bottom of a cistern with a cover over it. So, all of the input that I've received from attending these meetings has been overwhelmingly positive, very few negative input on that. So, I feel that this has been vetted, it will be a continuous process. I think the initial response from the community has been overwhelmingly in support. Anybody that I've shown the project to has been taken by the beauty of the project and what it'll do for the city. I think it is a great improvement over Basin Park. I know that the Basin Park Improvement Committee has worked over seven years on this project. This is not something that has just come about lately, this has been out in the public arena for a number of years, it's received a front page on the newspaper, there's been much talk about it in the community, and I would say without doubt that it's been overwhelmingly supported by the community as a whole.
Any further discussion? Mr. Pennell?
Well, I, a couple of things I'd like to say, and as I told a gentleman who called me today on this, and I'll not necessarily say that maybe Mr. DeVito's phone and emails don't go both ways, but I find it amazing that there are some of us who do get those calls and emails that, and the one, the one issue that was brought up is that council or certain members of council are listening only to a very small group. And, and I truly, I don't want to say resent that, but it questions my own integrity, which I have never had a problem with. I have listened to anyone who has asked me questions and answered to the best of my ability. The, the thing that I've, I discussed, I don't want to say in great length, but, you know, because I don't keep a timer on my telephone whenever they call me, is that I've heard from more places than one, it's been to the HDC, it's had unanimous approval, it's been to the Planning Commission, it's been to here, it's been to there, and, and my question to the gentleman and would be to this table is whether I'm for or against the project is immaterial if we cannot be dictating to Parks what's happening, but if it comes to the table, then I think that this table ought to be given the benefit, whether it's meeting minutes that shows that planning, you know, had it presented to them and they signed off 5-0, or it went to the HDC and here was their concerns. I, I think that there has been not one case, other than personal opinions, that has given any proof to the pudding, pro or con, that this has met an overwhelming approval. And, and again, I'm, I'm not sitting there going to every single commission meeting, every single public hearing, but I think if, if something is going to be addressed at this table, that there ought to be something that this table can look at and say, okay, HDC did not have any, because this happened about three years ago, and I won't, I won't get into the project, but, you know, it was, when they have a public hearing, the people that speak, their comments are put into those minutes, if there's a vote, or if there's a postponement, or if there's a general consensus. And I don't think we've had the benefit of that, other than listening to those people who talk to us or looking at the project. You know, I've had, I've had someone tell me that there's not a scale drawing to show that it's even a constructible project at this point in time, and my answer back is, if that is the case, then how could it have had any kind of approval or blessing at any of those other levels, other than somebody going, you know, it's, it's a good plan and people are really looking forward to it, and gee whiz, the city historian really is anxious about it, and, well, you've got six people sitting at this table that are, are being put under the gun for something now that the city attorney says that we don't have any business even being involved in, and I'd like clarification on the whole process.
Mr. DeVito?
I would move that we postpone this agenda item to our next meeting, so that we can satisfy Mr. Pennell with minutes from the HDC, the planning from the Parks meetings, and get, well, I think the attorney's already chimed in, so unless we need it in writing, I would make that motion.
Give him a second. Give him a second? All right.
Further discussion, please. I'll defer to Ms. Alexander and take my turn next.
Thank you. I just have one small point, and then I'm happy to join Mr. DeVito in delaying this until the next meeting, but what I, what keeps, I keep thinking of is not so much the project itself, but the idea of a commission, which is set up specifically like the Parks or the CAPC, as a nearly autonomous commission to make their own decisions and run without too much oversight, to be able to, to make decisions and keep things going. I don't know exactly how to put this, but I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that they are working as a commission hard on defining what they need, and their decisions with plenty of commissions, working out the details on all of their projects, they're taking it before every other commission and department head, and when should this become a issue that then has to come before the voter? I thought that that's one of the reasons we were set up as a mayor, council, government. Pardon me if I'm out of line here, but that's where my thinking's going, and I, that's, I just, I keep going back to that, not so much the project itself, just I'm seeing that as a precedent that can be set, that could lead to anything being brought up by a department or a commission that, a group, that needs to happen, that a group. Look at the trolley that the trolley department did at the top of Plainor Hill through their department, could well be that that had come before the voter and the voting public and not have passed. That has ended up being a beautiful addition to the interests of our city, but a lot of people didn't understand the significance. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just confused on who has the decision-making power here.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, you're having trouble with this.
Well, you're having trouble with this because it's not something that should be in our purview. The state in their wisdom, and that may be an occasional thing, they set up these commissions so that the actions that are trying to occur at this table don't happen. This is a politicization of an issue that should not be about politics. We are a political...